Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We will start with our introductions. To my left.
Chair Fairbanks.
Robert Mullin.
Julie Guistucci.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tenero.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Amy Kuzersky.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Sophia Campbell, Student Representative.
Thank you, I have a session in mind. I would like to be.
I would like to testify, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will shake a motion to approve the September 18th, September 18th, 2018 School Committee Meeting. Now, let's make the motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven zero zero. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, two pieces of correspondence to share tonight. One is a good receipt confirmation from Tom Administrator Hanson that the special town meeting will be on November 13th. That being said, that could impact our November, um, school committee meeting schedule. As you know, we meet the first and third Tuesday, which would be November 6th and November 20th, on the 6th of the election day. We can't push it to the 13th because that's special town meeting. So, uh, it will be up to the committee if we want to do a 30th meeting in October, or if we think, uh, you know, our meeting October 16th will be enough and we could, uh, make it to November 20th. So, we just need to make some kind of calendar adjustment and take a vote on that.
I think one meeting is enough.
I agree.
I personally want to go from October 16th to November 20th. Any further discussion? If I can get a vote.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I carry seven zero zero.
I'd like to skip the November 6th meeting altogether. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the second piece is, uh, the negotiating team for Unit D did reach out to us, and they are looking to schedule negotiations, uh, with Unit D on 10:15 and 10:24, beginning at 6:30, uh, lasting two hours in this room. And if the negotiation subcommittee, uh, if that works for them, you can just let me know. Uh, tonight, I will respond to the, uh, Unit D negotiating team. Come on.
Good with me? With mine? Good? Yes.
Excellent. I will let them know.
And we've already done the, uh...
Well, well, those are correct, yep.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? Seeing none. Share the success.
Alright, congratulations to the September Students of the Month, Sarah Inselmo, Jennifer Murphy, Christian LePointe, and Sophia Campbell. Um, preparation for homecoming and spirit weekend, the high school and middle school has begun. Both events will be taking place all next week, so be prepared to see students going to school all decked out in USA gear, camo, or whatever the day is. The high school has had their first few Tiger Talks, which is a period where students are able to discuss and explore various grade-specific topics. For example, the senior class was able to discuss college readiness and starting the application process, and the high school service learning class, collective donations, and non-perishable food items to help those who were affected by gas leaks in Andover, North Andover, and Lawrence at the last home football. And that is all.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 9A out of order.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve? Carrie seven zero zero? Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, tonight, our elementary team's gonna come up, our elementary administrative team's gonna come up and, um, talk to you about, uh, the start of the year and some of the exciting initiatives that go on at TES. Um, we, it was, this has been very well received on this end that, that we've broken up this year and did it differently, that each school was kind of presenting, talking about their initiatives. So, we look forward to hear all the fun stuff that's gonna happen at TES this year.
Great, so, so, thank you. As we were preparing for this, uh, it gave me the opportunity to reflect on, um, the great, uh, I think, pleasure that I have in being principal at Tinsborough Elementary School. This is my sixth year at TES, um, and we're here to talk about a lot of the great things that we're doing at, at our elementary school, but we also realize there's much area for improvement and things that we wanna continue to work on. So, we're gonna highlight some of the really strong things that, that are happening at TES, um, and in the end, we'll certainly open it up to any questions that you might have. Um, so, taking back, um, the first day of school on August 28th, we opened the doors to just over 800 students at TES, um, and over 100 new students to our building in preschool through grade five. Um, so, huge undertaking in terms of the number of students in our building, um, and the number of new families that we are welcoming, um, to, to the Tinsborough community. Um, I think one of the big things that we spent a lot of time this summer doing is recruiting and hiring some phenomenal new staff members. Um, so, TES, while it has a very large student population, it also has a lot of staff, and so we have over 100 staff members, but we have 19 new staff members in our building. Um, and I have jokingly said we hit the jackpot, but it really isn't a joke. Um, we have such phenomenal new staff members, whether it be paraprofessionals, new custodians, classroom teachers. Um, we had the benefit of actually having staff join us with years and years of experience in neighboring school districts, and in some cases, staff members who were willing to take a pay cut because they valued and appreciated what was happening in, in Tinsborough public schools. Um, so, when we opened the doors, I felt much more confident with the teams and what we are able to offer our students because of the quality of staff members that we have at TES. Um, so, with all of these new hires came a lot of moves and reassignments, and so we had close to 27, um, changes, whether it was room locations, repurposing some of the rooms in our building, and I would be remiss if I did not mention Ryan Guthrie and John Guthrie, um, from our custodian and maintenance staff. The amount of work, um, that went into the summer to be sure that we could open the doors and be ready for students on the first day of school. Um, one of the things we talked about when preparing for this was not one thing was misplaced, everything found its, its new home, um, and staff was prepared and ready to go, and some of those hires didn't happen until mid-August. Um, so, it was literally daily that we were in communication with maintenance and custodial staff to be able to say, this needs to happen, and it all happened seamlessly. And, you know, I, I, I give huge kudos, um, to the, that crew. Um, so, in addition to the new staff, as you know, we have Sergeant Steve Manning that has, um, been assigned to TES. He's with us two days a week. Uh, 11 years ago was the last time we implemented the D R. lessons, uh, for grade five students, so we're really excited about bringing that back. So, he's gonna be implementing those lessons with our fifth grade students this winter. In addition, he is planning to, um, implement some other school safety initiatives. Um, so, for example, coming up this month will be Halloween safety. Um, so, he's gonna be meeting with the students in our lower elementary school, so we welcome and appreciate, um, that support from Sergeant Manning. In terms of, you know, the last month, we've certainly been busy. Um, so, we welcome our preschool and kindergarten families with playdates and orientations, and that's an opportunity for our new families and returning families to come in, um, get to know some of the students that will be in their children's classroom, and get to know the staff. Um, in addition to that, our school counselors, we have three school counselors at TES, and they hold new student luncheons for kindergarten through grade five, and so this new students to TES have the chance to be able to bring a friend to lunch, and during that lunch session, they have a game of Jeopardy where they get to know more about fun facts about TES. Um, so, that's been, uh, well-received by our, our families, and certainly the new students gives them another adult, familiar adult to the building that they can, they can get to know. Um, beginning of September, we kicked off our open house and had our second annual ice cream social. Uh, one thing that we really wanted to be sure that we were doing with our open house was to make sure it was geared towards the students, and so, last year was the first year that we implemented the model that we, that we are now doing this year, which was, the open house is basically the students coming in and showing off their classrooms and their school to their parents, and it's so nice to see the kids walking in with the parents, and they're really not even walking in, they're running in, holding their parents' hands to show off their classrooms and show off our school, and wait, you have to go see our new Maker Space and come see our library, and it, just the excitement, and it's all driven by the students. Um, so, we moved away from the model of the teachers standing and presenting, uh, on curriculum. They share that information out through newsletters, their blogs, websites, uh, through social media, and really, it became about the students showing off their school and showing the excitement of what happens at TES. Um, we've already started our fall enrichment programs, and we have some great options for students, um, whether it be, uh, drama or coding. Uh, we have students that are staying in the after program, doing Lego Club, and, um, Krista Maroc, our, our science and technology teacher, is offering sewing. So, all of those have been well-received, well-attended, um, and they just started last week, so we're in full swing. We've certainly been busy, and we continue to, um, plan new and, you know, creative things for our students and families. Um, you know, I think one thing that, um, I really have valued about Mike's time as, as superintendent is he wants to be sure that we're constantly reflecting on, on our practices and what we're doing in our schools and not just continually ruling over things, and so, just slight adjustments to open house, after-school enrichment offerings, or whatever it might be that we're doing in the classroom, or tech integration, those things are ongoing, um, and, and I feel like we've really moved, um, things ahead in our building. So, Erin, Brian, and John are gonna highlight a few areas. Um, I will summarize in terms of goals and focus areas that we have this year, and then certainly we'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
So, like Carrie said, we had 27 moves, and that's pretty, uh, huge and a, and a large undertaking, um, but we really, um, utilized every inch of our building to meet the needs of our students. So, some things that we really wanted to highlight was, um, bringing the early childhood wing back together after five years. Um, because of, uh, room restrictions and things like that, we weren't, weren't able to have our kindergarten team together, um, and for collaboration purposes, for having the kids in one area, um, it's been really beneficial. Uh, we've already seen the benefits of it. Uh, all three, uh, school counselors are now located in our main office suite. Um, they were, uh, last year in different locations of the building, so having them all there in one space is, um, really ideal for both staff and students. Um, Katie La Rochelle has really taken our library space and has taken off with it. Um, I don't know if a lot of you have seen her, uh, Facebook page, but she's updating daily, um, with the locations, the new books that are coming in. Um, Deb Anderson has created what we now refer to as the art studio, not the art classroom, um, and she's really taken off with her classroom. Um, she has puppets, she has color, and she's really brought that space to life. Um, our Maker Space was moved into one of our larger classrooms. Um, Mrs. Maroc is extremely happy about this location, and it's really kind of optimized that, um, either even storage limitations that we had, um, so she's loving her new space. Our new studio, uh, for Tiger Talk, which I'll touch upon a little bit after, um, we have now an open space area which we never had before. Um, so, it's down where our Maker Space used to be. Teachers are now utilizing this space to come down for guided reading, um, independent, um, reading selections. We have our library down there, so classrooms are really, really utilizing this space in taking their classrooms out of their four walls and, um, kind of just bringing them out, and they've used this for, um, collaboration space between the teachers and the teams. Um, so, this has been an awesome addition, uh, to our building. Um, and even just the additions to our walls, uh, we, we work over the summer and, and try to find some inspiring quotes for our students and ways to really just brighten, um, our entryways and making it a warm and welcoming place for our students' families and staff. Um, so, that's really been our focus for this year. So, uh, one thing that has really taken off in our building is the option of flexible seating. Um, Carrie had, had recently posted a picture, um, of our students, and it comes in all shapes and fashion, um, between standing desks and beanbag chairs, yoga ball chairs. Really, it's providing our students with a choice and a voice of what is their optimal learning environment and how they learn best. Um, a lot of us, I know myself, can't sit at a desk for very long, so asking our students to do the same, um, can be tricky. So, um, and it takes a lot of planning and a lot of management and organization on our teachers, and it's a, and it's a big undertaking. It's more than just furniture in a classroom. Um, it's a classroom management style that it's really taken off. Uh, teachers are now, um, requesting grant funding for more additional seating, and it's been provided to them, and the children are, are very receptive to it. So, our Tiger Talk's a little different. Um, in our building, this is our new studio, um, state-of-the-art, uh, for an elementary school, uh, where we used to do our lunch, um, options over the intercom. We now have graphics, and, uh, we're providing daily communication to our staff and to our students through this, um, our news, our news crew. Um, so, some things that, you know, Christine McGinnis, one of our school counselors, has really taken this on, uh, loves it, and Jeff Rogers has worked collaboratively with her. Uh, we now have a YouTube link that, uh, the teachers get every day, so they can watch it at their convenience, um, so it's, it's been helpful for teachers as well, uh, to implement the, uh, Tiger Talk in a time of day in their classroom that's appropriate. Um, they've included things like Wacky Wednesday, where classrooms are able to provide fun wacky facts, um, to share, and the classrooms just get excited hearing their, their teacher's name on the news. Um, we have Broback Thursday, where, uh, teachers and staff are providing photos of themselves as an elementary-age student, and it's just a fun way to really get to know, um, know the teachers and the staff in our building. We have Dance It Out Friday. And what other better way would you like to start your day on a Friday than a little dance party? Um, and so, it's just a great way, and our fifth grade, um, students really run the show. They are the ones that are managing, um, the TV, they're managing the video, um, so it's, it's an awesome undertaking.
I'm gonna turn it over, um, to John, and so you can join us on the Dance It Out Friday and the news, we'd love to have you.
There you go. Dr. Flanagan. If you wanna provide, if you wanna provide your baby picture as well, I'm sure the kids will love it. I won't be providing mine, it's not pretty. Um, so, one of the things we wanted to talk about is, uh, the different assessments, um, and, and data that we're collecting throughout our school. Um, you know, it's one of those important things we feel is gonna help us drive our instruction. Uh, last year, for the first year, we implemented the Wind Block, which we really look at targeting students that are in need of interventions and enrichments, uh, and through some of this data that we're collecting here with our staff, we're able to specifically target needs, uh, that students have at each grade level. Um, so, one of the things we're looking to do this year is really calibrate our F and P, um, which is the Fontes Pinellas, which we're doing inventory that we take with students, and we ask, find out what their reading level is, what their fluency is, comprehension, things like that, uh, and we need to look at it across grade level, make sure everyone is, you know, following the program to fidelity, and, and it's not just happening across grade level, but it's happening from, you know, kindergarten is doing it the same way as first grade, as second grade, as third grade. Um, the other thing we're looking at is our math benchmark calibration. Um, you know, we have some staff that feel, or that use the paper tests more than the online tests, um, and they may use paper tests, say, for, um, all the topic tests that they do with the Envisions program, but more so than just do the online tests for the benchmarks, and we've really talked to them about, we're starting to talk to them about, you know, making sure that we're all getting the same assessment, so we can accurately look at what the student achievement is, how students are progressing throughout the year. Uh, the next one, and I know the middle school talked a lot about this, and, and we started this last year, uh, was our N I W A map assessments. Uh, we currently do these tests in grades five through eight. Uh, it happens three times a year. Uh, we just finished our first session with the fifth grade. Um, it, from looking, started looking at the scores and where students are following, it really gives us a good, you know, indication of where they are at the beginning of the year. Uh, we will be starting our Wind Blocks the end of October, uh, beginning, middle of October, end of October, beginning of November timeframe. So, this'll be able to, we'll be able to give the staff, um, those reports, and I think in late November, we're gonna really look with, um, the people from N I W A to look at what reports we wanna use that really help drive our instruction forward, uh, and look at our Wind Block and say, how can we target how those students did on those assessments for, uh, there are three tests, reading language and math, and how they did on those to better, better provide those, uh, interventions and enrichments during that time period. Um, we just received our M C A S scores, um, and we're starting to look at that and start the process of our M C A S protocols that we started last year, uh, to really look at how students did and, and kind of drill down on the questions and the topics in each grade level, where we can improve on, what we did well, you know, and how we can further, um, further reach out to these students that need some supports in certain areas. Um, we're also starting this year, we're gonna implement the, uh, the Divles, uh, it is a kindergarten, uh, screening. It's not gonna do away with what our current kindergarten screening is, but it's an additional assessment that we can look at, um, different reading styles of, uh, students, and it's a good screener for dyslexia, and one of the things that we see is that the earlier we can start those reading interventions, uh, at the kindergarten level, you know, the more progress we can make towards, you know, having those students identified at an early age. Um, so, those are some of the big assessments and, and data topics that we're looking at at TES. Uh, the next thing we're looking at is, um, our technology integration. Um, our tech department's done a great job, um, from Derek Piper, uh, to Jeff Rogers and John Chalmersky, uh, and Jamie, uh, and now Tom Varnum, we've just added in, uh, is a specialist. He comes over to our school, he's been able to work with staff, uh, they'll, they'll reach out to him and say, you know, hey, can you come in and look at, you know, Google Classroom, uh, which we started off had, you know, pockets of people using Google Classroom in the upper elementary, uh, and teachers found it very helpful. They, you know, go to a big space and they'd have students on Chromebooks all around, say, you know, the, a library, uh, and students could really work on, you know, their writing, uh, and what they were doing, and the teacher could kind of see every single thing that those students were typing and comment in real time while they were doing that through the Google Classroom, which, you know, uh, when you walk around and you ask the students, you know, how is that that you get in those comments? Like, this is great, we can, you know, I can see what the teacher's telling me right there, and I can make those corrections right away, and it's fresh in my mind. Um, so, that's something that we, we started in the upper elementary, and now it's, it's trickled down to the lower elementary. We have a lot more lower elementary, uh, staff that are using Google Classroom, um, in doing that. Um, we do have 82 new Kindle Fires in our grade two, uh, so Kindle Fire is much like a tablet, uh, they can put educational apps on there, um, and, and the students can use those during the classroom to work on math or, or reading, uh, while they're in there. And then our Chromebooks, we, we've increased the number of Chromebooks we have in, uh, grades three to five, so we have almost every student in grades three to five has Chromebooks, which part of what it'll enable us to do this spring is to test all of our, uh, M C A S sessions at the same time, so our grades three, four, and five will be, all be able to test on the same days, minimize the amount of time these kiddos have out of the classroom, uh, and that we're occupying different spaces, computer labs and such. So, it's really gonna be a big, uh, bonus for us this year, where we're gonna have a total of six days, uh, of M C A S instead of spreading it out over a couple months. I'm gonna pass it off to Brian.
So, obviously, meeting the needs of all students is something that's a top priority for the district, um, and similar to what the middle school explained when they were here, we continue to, uh, build upon our co-teaching model that we started to implement in grades three to five in our building last year. Um, the model's shown to be extremely effective, uh, providing inclusion support to students, um, but this year, in addition to our, uh, enhancing our inclusion program, we're also looking at some of the, uh, specialized programs some of our students need. Um, one thing we found in the district is the level of need of our students is becoming higher and higher. Um, and so, really taking a, a good look at our, um, specialized program and enhancing that is something that this year, um, and towards the spring of last year, um, we started to look at. Um, and what we're doing, uh, this year, we're lucky enough to have our, uh, behavioral support provided by, um, a contractor provider through the New England Center for Children, and they have, um, credible resource, um, network that, um, has been able to provide, um, training to our staff members both over the summer and at the beginning of this year in a, a few different areas. The first being, um, applied behavior analysis, um, and this is, um, something that we provided training for eight paraprofessionals district-wide over the summer in a four-day intensive, uh, institute that the New England Center puts on. Um, and this is increasing our staff's ability to meet the needs of, um, students who require individualized didactic approach to instruction. Um, in addition to that, we've also been able to, um, implement a customizable, um, curriculum program that will allow us to, um, teach a broad array of skills to learners from age three through 22 in the areas of communication, social skills, um, academic self-help, um, and a variety of other areas, and in addition to that, really collect data on progress and how those students are doing, so, um, in addition to some of the progress monitoring tools John spoke about, for some of our needy learners, this is gonna give us, um, real-time data on how they're doing towards their, um, goals and objectives. Uh, and finally, more and more of our students are requiring augmentative or alternative communication, um, tools in order to, uh, communicate. Um, and so, we've done, um, extensive training, um, last year with Tech Solutions, who's been training, um, one of our speech and language apologists in augmentative and alternative communication, and this year, they continue to provide some consultation with the hope of growing our, uh, internal capacity, where this year, um, our own staff will take more and more of an active lead in, in that and, um, be able to provide services to the students that require that. So, pass it back off to Carrie.
So, it's, it's always easy to, to brag about TES and all the great things that we're doing, uh, but we recognize that status quo isn't okay, and it's certainly not okay for our students. And so, on a daily basis, we're pushing ourselves, um, to be better and to do better for our students, and we're encouraging our staff to do that, um, because we, we know that our students, um, deserve more, and so, we have a lot of focus areas, um, that we will continue to work on in the upcoming school year, um, over the next several years, and we've spent a lot of time talking to Mark about this, um, since he's come on board, but math, um, will be a priority. Um, it certainly is a priority, but we're gonna provide some, um, greater emphasis on math at TES. Um, we've seen remarkable results from our readers and writers workshop model, um, in E L A, and we'd like to see, uh, similar, um, results in math. Um, you know, I think the workshop model has proven to be effective because it differentiates instruction for our students, and they're getting targeted, um, individualized instruction at their level, whether it be they need enrichment or they need intervention, um, and we really, I, I think, need to start seeing that happening more and more. Um, it's happening in pockets, but we need to see it happening more and more in math. Um, so, that's gonna be a, a big undertaking, I think, for our school, um, for our district. As you know, um, middle school and high school just adopted a new program for math, so we're looking forward over the next, um, three to four years to be spending quite a, a bit of time from a professional development standpoint, um, whether it's going to outside conferences or workshops, visiting neighboring school districts who have, um, employed some of that workshop model in math, and, um, so that's gonna be a, a big undertaking and, and focus for us. We'll continue to, to work on meeting the social-emotional needs of our students. Um, I think it goes without saying, uh, our Strikes core values really have taken off, um, but we are in year six, and so we, we recognize that we need to, to take it a step further, um, so empowering student voice and student choice and leadership roles for our students, even in preschool and kindergarten. Um, so, those are big things that are tied into our strategy for district improvement, and as you know, we spent a great deal of time developing that strategy, and so it's, it has to be part of our common daily practice, um, looking at those action items, looking at those, um, key priority areas that we need to focus on, not only, um, in grade levels, but as a school and, and as a, as a district. Um, so, as always, you know, we, we welcome this opportunity to come and, and promote all the great things that are happening at TES, and certainly thank you for your continued support, um, of our school, and happy to, to open it up to any questions that you might have.
I'd first like to thank you all who've been here this evening, thank you for your presentations.
The time was nice.
But I'll do stuff.
I'll do stuff. Uh, I don't know if Dr. Flanagan would like to add anything before I open it up to the rest of the committee.
I think, you know, my hope is that you saw with all three presentations, the focus on, uh, getting to know our kids, personalization within the schools, social-emotional learning, certainly, but each one of the presentations came back teaching and learning, and that's what we talk about daily, and that's, that's really what drives our strategy for district improvement. Um, you know, as you, you saw the data graph up there, we look at that and we wanna, we wanna know students by name, where they're achieving, and how we can improve, uh, for each and every student, so I think that's a common theme, you know, we're just tremendous teams across, tremendous admin teams across the district, and, uh, we're very fortunate in this community to have, uh, some, some great administrators.
At this time, I'll open up to the rest of the committee.
So, I've been to five open houses now, and I love the new style. I love the ice cream social. Like you said, my kids, they actually fight over whose classroom we go in first. So, it's, it's a great time, it's, it's also good, it brings the community, yeah, we get to socialize with the other parents, um, uh, so I didn't get to see you guys in the dunk tank this year, but, uh, it'll be next year, next year.
Yes, the dunk tank was postponed because of the weather, so we did it on Friday during school hours, and Dr. Flanagan was sure to be there to watch that happen, um, and take some notes.
There you go.
The kids love it, the kids love it, um, so, yeah, I, I think the flow of the, the open house is so much better, um, than previous years, and again, it's really about the, the kids. years and again, it's really about the, the kids getting to show things off, so.
As a member of sports organizations too, it's great to invite those groups in, the sports departments, the boys scouts, girls scouts, just another option for our parents to see what's out there for the kids. So I really like that aspect too.
It was crowded in that hallway.
It was good though.
We had a lot of community groups that asked for tables, that you think, so it was great.
Yeah.
So I have a question real quick. So Brian, during your part of the presentation, you were mentioning that the students, and I think my interpretation is that the school is now better equipped to identify the students that need the extra assistance or the help as opposed to students who are just moving in with just more challenges or issues. I'm not sure I'm going to word that correctly. But I think you guys have the tools now or you're better equipped to identify students who need, who need that extra assistance at an earlier age.
That's one of the things like John was talking about with the DIBL that'll help us identify early reading intervention as required. It's a great screener for dyslexia and will provide an opportunity to provide some interventions in earlier ages to hopefully get students to continue to make progress without special education support being needed. In terms of level of need, and I think this is consistent across our neighboring districts too, when we talk about level of need, we're talking about the amount of service that students require to make progress. And across the board, even from our early intervention transition to casual and students that are also transitioning into the district, the, the level of need and the amount of support that they require in order to make progress is higher than it used to be. I think our ability as a special education team to identify students' learning needs has always been really effective and appropriate. Some of the other tools we're implementing are going to help enhance that. One major step we took this year is for some of our students that require a more individualized setting and a more didactic approach to learning, we've, we've really enhanced that and increased our ability to meet those students' needs where they're at.
Fantastic, fantastic. And then the follow-up I have on for Kerry, Ms. Emma, the question you said the math piece was important and I know the TMS has a new math philosophy or a new program there and those are, those are joined up? So, so it's like a feeder program going in or?
No, so currently we're using Envision's program at TES and the middle school, high school has adopted a different math program. So we'll continue to build upon our transition from five to six. We are using different programs, but the standards are the standards, so.
And just a follow-up on that, we had identified mathematical instructional practices as a focus area at the elementary where in the upper levels we had identified the materials. That doesn't mean we're not going to circle back. As a matter of fact, I think in our group review site, it's coming up very soon.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Like there's a focus on instructional practice there and as long as we're staying dedicated to this framework, to the standards, the materials, at this point our hearts are hyper concerned about.
Just want to make sure everybody's watching, know that they put that together. Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Good, good information.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you coming in. How do you find the communications with the parents? Elementary school is a really, you know, a feeder system that, and the parents need to take a lot of responsibility towards the encouragement and improvement on the education of the kids. Do we have a clear communication lines to these?
So I mean, I think our staff does a phenomenal job around communication, whether it's they have blogs or newsletters or Facebook page or Twitter, they're constantly sharing the story of what's happening in their classrooms and within our school and we will continue to share that out as well. You know, I think the homeschool communication in an elementary school is, is very different than as you, as you know, in, in middle school and, and high school. And our students aren't coming home sharing an awful lot, but the parents need that information to be able to be sure there's that collaboration between home and school. So our teachers are on, you know, I feel like they, they do a phenomenal job at making sure that parents have a true understanding about what's happening in the classroom, what the expectations are of their student, if there are any concerns or, you know, as a matter of fact, if there's, you know, something great to talk about, they're picking up the phone and calling, they're sending an email. So I feel like the lines of communication between home and school at TES are, are very solid and I feel like we use different venues based on teacher expertise or style for that, for that matter. And, and I empower the teachers to do that. I want them to, to have, you know, the choice to be able to decide whether it's a newsletter or a blog or Facebook and parents have been very receptive to all the modes of communication that we're using.
You know, not only that, you know, the teacher, not only just the teacher-parent communication, staff, the administrative staff also has weekly smalls update, also updates on their Facebook page every week. I can definitely attest to the teacher communications, three, four or five communications, whether it's on the Facebook page or through email directly, which I've got to say is definitely improved my ability and I'm sure it helps a lot of parents to be able to stay more in touch with what's happening in the classroom, to be able to help our children, my child at home with anything that they have and allows me to ask questions because obviously it's been a long time since I've been in those classrooms. The other thing, touching on what John was talking about with the Chromebooks, what I've found this year is not only the use of Chromebooks within schools, but also being able to use Chrome and Chrome documents such as slide presentations or Word documents is allowing the, the kids to be able to take their homework and do it more on a weekly basis. I'll just give you an example. My, my son is getting his math assignment for the next week on Friday and he is able to do that at any time between that Friday and the due day for it. The math assignments that he's typically getting is doing some research. So he's looking for some news articles that relate to the topic that they're going over in class at that time and then taking that information and creating slides for a presentation in school on that due date, which I think is really fantastic because these kids are getting older, they're going to have to start doing that type of research and doing write papers when they're in the middle school and the high school. So they're getting exposed to that earlier and allowing for the flexibility for them to do it at home on the weekend if they want to or whatever night is good for them. That's, that's been a huge help instead of just having them come home with nightly math problems, a sheet of them to work out. We don't always, all of us don't always have that time for them to do that. Last thing that I wanted to touch on, I've had the opportunity to spend quite a bit of time in several, more than several school districts over the past year. And while they all do something extremely well, one thing that they, I, I think that Tinsworth Elementary does better than any of them that I've seen is to have, to create that warm and welcoming feeling, not only to the kids, but to the parents when they come in. I've heard many children, my own included, that just call Tinsworth Elementary their second home. And for them to be able to feel that comfortable and to look forward to going into a, a school each day, it, it just makes, you know, worlds of difference for their, for their education each day. So I just wanted to congratulate you all and to thank you very much for all of your hard work and that, yeah, the, that open house is just fantastic. It is a lot of fun. It's busy. It's extremely loud, but it's so worth it. It is, you feel like it's a community.
So I appreciate your comment about the welcoming environment and, and Mike and I have talked about this an awful lot. That's really important to us. It, it took a, a long time to be able to put color on the walls at TES and to put those inspirational quotes that Mrs. Sussa talked about, but I do, it's their home away from home and it's really important that they feel safe and secure and happy in their environment and the staff as well, so thank you. I'm sorry if we spent too much time. We were given a five-minute timeline, but I do have to say, we went back and looked at the middle school and high school and theirs was twenty-plus minutes, so. So we had more slides.
I don't think we're compelling or anything. Walk into your nine, speak to Dr. Branco. Be out of here, Ben.
Hopefully you can go quickly through the rest of your agenda items because I know Dr. Flanagan isn't feeling well. But truly, the, the invitation is always open for you to, to join us, see some of our new spaces. We welcome you coming in and asking questions, getting to know our school.
Again, thank you all for coming out on this rainy, cold night.
Our pleasure. All right. Thanks.
So at this time, we'll go back to our regular scheduled program. Back to, I don't remember number six, subcommittee update. Personal modifications, request for maternity.
Just one, Danielle Sullery, our teacher at the middle school, she's requesting maternity leave. We still have some time, another month or so, a couple of months, I believe.
Unfinished business superintendent evaluation. The subcommittee met this evening with Dr. Flanagan, the writer of all. We are very pleased as a group with your job performance and thank you for everything you do. The presentations that we've received over the last three meetings says a lot about your leadership, so we thank you for that. One of the things that I'd also like to say, a part of this, but as part of that, all three of them also discuss Ryan Guthrie, which I, I think is, is a compliment to him and the job performance that he's done. Back to Dr. Flanagan. His overall rating for the standard was pretty proficient and then one exemplary. The exemplary that was given to Dr. Flanagan was in the family, community engagement. We believe it was a community engagement, standing up, engaging the community and the families in what we do and what your goals and objectives are and achieving, so. We've offered and he's accepted an extension of one year to his contract. So I will need a motion to accept his, firstly, I'd like to open it up to the committee. Any questions to reverse to that? So at this time, I will seek a motion to approve his evaluation and the one-year extension on his current contract.
Make a motion.
I need further discussion.
Just to clarify that as an extension on his existing contract, which then extends it out to the year twenty-one, twenty-two. Just making sure that the wider audience is, is aware of that.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll lock it on in.
Yes. Three twenty, summer of twenty-two.
So I would like to say, congratulations, it's well deserved and thank you very much for an incredible year of the past year and so far, this year's been wonderful as well. All due to your leadership and I appreciate it greatly.
So I have a motion of seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Let Kerry seven zero zero.
Mr. Chev, I can just say briefly, you know, thank you from the committee for your support. Truly, truly, I'm beneficial to have a, a school committee that advocates for kids tirelessly and that doesn't necessarily want to be a superintendent, allow me to do the job and I really do appreciate that support. You saw the presentations over the last three meetings. We have tremendous administrators in our, in our schools that do a great job leading those schools, but I would be remiss if I didn't say, the team in central office from Mark to Joe to Sarah to Derek to Ryan is phenomenal. And of course, none of that happens without my right hand, Chairman Fairbanks. So we just have, we have a great team and it's an absolute joy to come to work every day. We're, we're all trying to do the right thing each and every day for kids and I think we're all pulling the rope in the same direction. So fortunate to, to work in a, in a great district and a great community and I thank you so much for your support.
Now, I'm for next year's goals.
So they're in your drive, right? You hear your feedbacks and assume that those, those goals are okay and that's all right, but we'll begin working on those immediately.
Has everyone, everyone had an opportunity to review this?
Yep. One of the things, one of my, ideas is.
Here we go. It's the superintendent.
You know, when my kids were in school, it was, what is my, what is my child? In these professional practice schools, the, not professional, sorry, the, the data and structural practices, it seems like we're looking at the results of all these tests to better help the teachers teach a wide variety of kids. But I'm concerned about my child. How does that come back to that point?
So Mark and I, and to defer to Mark, we've had a lot of conversation about this and Mark, Mark is a great line. We want to look at that data and we want to be able to identify student by name. Student by name, not a group of kids, not a subset of kids, not a subset of kids, kids by name. What does Mike and Ryan need in math? And those are the conversations, those are the conversations we want to have. So if you want to.
I mean, in a couple of weeks, you're going to get probably not as brief a presentation from you as you'd like, but on the MCAS results and the accountability, there's a lot of buzz out there right now. It's making the newspapers, people talking about the new system. You'll, we are already taking a deep dive. I've started, the principals are taking the ball and running at building level and then we're going to do really good analysis over the next couple of weeks with teachers. And at the end of the day, we're going to see trends and we're going to see numbers and scores. And what I keep telling everybody is make sure we're identifying kids by name. And if we do that and if we find out that this particular student has a deficiency or an ability and we continue to develop that child's ability or enhance the ability to grow, the accountability scores and the percentages and the comparisons will take care of themselves. So my answer, you know, to, to the public and to people with students by name is we are trying to get to each student's need by name as quickly as possible. They have every single piece of data they need sorted and ready to go. It's not just MCAS. You saw it tonight and you've seen it over the past two presentations, how much we're, we're valuing data now. I'm a baseball junkie, it's like baseball analytics and how that's changed us. But the more we know about kids, the earlier we know about kids, the better we can help them develop and go with some of their, so. I'm proud of that work. It does take pride and it's a, it's a, it's a philosophical change and a practice change.
No, but your question allows us to, to talk about it and let people know that we're not looking at subgroups. It allows us to really nail down to that one student and really find out what they need.
So I think that's what parents are looking for, at least what I was looking for when my kids were in school is, you know, what does my child need? What, where do, where can I do or where do I need to go and get that help?
And who's talking about it? Who's analyzing that data and what strategy are they implementing? That's, that, those are the conversations we're having.
I think that, you know, we talk about data, but I, I'd like to see it, maybe figure out a better terminology to, you know, knowing the student by name, for example, is that?
I, I would like to add to that though because you've had eighteen-plus years in the district with, with your students and then now I'm, and the eighteen-plus years now I'm going into nineteenth year here. And we were talking earlier in the evaluation of Dr. Flanagan and Dr. Flanagan and his team, although they're very data-driven, right? We've seen that in the past eighteen months that you've been here on that leadership role and with Dr. Branco here as well. The, the, the data points to where I think it's, it's like that wide look, but then the teaching styles and the, the leadership that we have here, and it's said from each person or each group that's presented to us is that we want to know the kids by name. We want to be able to help them individually. And I've been a beneficiary of that on both sides of that spectrum where one student didn't need to advocate for herself because she understood it. Another one is learning and it's, we're giving the kids that ability at a younger grade in the middle schools where they have to really advocate for themselves. So it's that piece where we can identify the student by name and it's that partnership in the camera, the kid has to identify or advocate for themselves as well because it's that partnership, right? The kid is silent and doesn't do that, we haven't done our job to help them leaving you, you guys, really, the teachers. But that's the whole point is that the advocate, the advocacy, it's, it's almost a partnership where the teachers are going to identify that student. The student really has to participate and really have to say, you know what, I want to grasp this, I want to get this. And I think, I think the district has done a really good job across the three, the three schools to where the, the majority or a great number of the kids are advocating for themselves and they say, you know what, I need that help. I, I'm, I'm seeing that, not only with my, with my students, but with other students that are in that, you know, that, that grade. But that's, I think that's the data, but it's the, the style that we're going after, the individual learning to, to know each, each kid by name.
And the fact that our students are comfortable and have to advocate for themselves. And the fact that our students are comfortable and have to advocate for themselves. My children were sent when, when they were five and they were one, they developed. They always felt, my daughter always felt comfortable advocating for herself. So could I get a motion to approve superintendent's decision in two thousand eighteen, in team school?
Make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Capital asset.
Mr. Chair, the committee asked me, I was going to ask me to follow up with Todd Thomas, Richard Hanson regarding an alternate and if they have the right to vote, the ability to vote. Though it's not specifically written that they do, it's been the practice in this community that alternate would have the ability to vote. So he was going to work the language into special time meeting or any of the time meeting to make sure that that language is somewhat refined. So if, if the committee wishes to appoint an alternate, that would be appropriate time. If not, that's fine as well. I think we want, we want to put out a meeting next week, capitalize the subcommittee, to begin those conversations as that starts to-
So alternate to the full committee. If we feel that the alternate is necessary, obviously, Mr. Muller will be our capital asset members and will be our voting members. So.
Good idea.
It's a good idea for-
Does it have an alternate?
If somebody can't make it.
Well, I, I stated last time, I don't necessarily think it's, I don't think it's necessary. But if the, if the full board would like that, I'd be happy to go along with it, of course.
Again, you two are the representatives of the committee and that's the way we want to put it in that. We're not interested in having somebody that has an alternate. Personally, I'd, I'd like to see that in all our committees, to be honest with you.
Well, yes, if, if we're going to do it for one, there's absolutely-
Honestly, some of our committees we do, we go for office so we can sort of look at, Mr. Service, why don't we put that on the next agenda? We'll bring the subcommittees back and we'll just name alternates for all the subcommittees.
That's not a bad idea.
So if you'd like to table this and just do it all at the next meeting, we can do that.
Well, when's the first capital asset meeting?
Yeah, well, we're going to meet next Tuesday.
Then why don't we name an alternate for that tonight?
You agree.
And then give the rest to them next time.
So somebody would like to make a motion to appoint an alternate?
Is any, can we ask if there's anyone interested?
Oh, anybody interested?
I'll be interested.
And Moran would be interested. So we think that was an interested, aye.
Then what are we, a motion to, um, aside, to appoint Mr. Moran as our alternate for the capital asset?
So that is-
That's my motion.
Your motion, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I-
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay, did you, sorry. You're still talking.
Yeah. I believe I hear you.
Yeah, because I talk to them so much during these meetings.
Thank you. I'd good luck to our capital asset subcommittee group.
Did a great job last year.
Yes, they did.
We did okay. We did better this year.
We did a great job last year. You did. And the group is, is all around this school and our other buildings. MASC, Mass delegate.
Mr. President, I'm going to be up in the first week of November and typically there are a litany of items that MASC takes form of vote on and then becomes a full position. Um, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Mr. Muller will be on the Cape and it would be logical to nominate him as your voted member.
Make that motion.
Second.
He was last year and we appreciate that. Thank you again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero zero. And Julie's home this year as well. So yeah, it's, it's actually, I'd like to see all of us do it at least once. You have an opportunity to talk to other school committee members, see what's going on in their districts, what their issues are statewide. You know, we look at Little Tingsboro and we, sometimes we think we have issues, but when you look at what some of these cities and towns throughout Massachusetts, we don't have it so bad.
So that's four schools in the district, Joe?
Yes, we do. Yes. We have different challenges.
Different challenges.
Yes.
Can I bring up this? In the past years, the MASC have held training classes for new members to school boards. In the past years, they've been spread out over four days. This year, they've moved to condensing those classes to Friday and Saturday. So that people can have an opportunity, you know, they're, if, if they have to, they're only missing one day during the week from their jobs. And then Saturday morning as well. I do encourage anyone who's looking to do this in the future to at least attend those two days if they continue with this type of schedule, which I think will work out a whole lot better. So I, I've already had, uh, discussed this with Julie and she is going to adjust her schedule for that.
No, I know we, we talked about it one time today, during that with other school districts within our region where they'll come to us and, and do a class with, say, Drake and Kempford or, you know, anybody's names.
It was a regional, we've been also regional training, especially if we like.
Here and bring them in, so send everybody else, with that for example, to the different teams. New business.
That's not-
Well, we already did. Finance. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Twelve warrants for bills were presented to the committee tonight. I have them back, all approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts. For signing a payroll, we'll actually catch up on two payrolls on the meeting on the sixteenth. And that is it for me tonight.
School committee discussion.
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
If you can, help out to our neighbors in the Merrimack Valley who displaced out of their homes by the gas explosions. I was in Nashville when I got that. We thought it was some kind of attack. What was going on up there? But just dreadful to see people's homes destroyed or people displaced. So if you can help out, please do.
I just want to make a comment on what Mr. Moran was talking about. How students, like one of the most important parts of learning is students advocating for themselves. And I think that is one of the most important parts of learning. And what from the elementary school's presentation about them making it a more comfortable place for students to kind of like go to, that definitely really helps if you're comfortable. It's easier to advocate for yourself. And I think that the elementary school and the middle school, like the new changes they have been making are going to be really beneficial for students to advocate for themselves and just better their education. So I think they're doing a good job with that. In the high school, I, I've like seen the effects just around school and I think that teachers and administration are doing a great job with that too.
Awesome, awesome. I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Good to know you. Thank you.
I'd say the same thing I said last time. I love the new format with the different schools coming in on their own night. I feel like they could each talk for an hour. So I think it's really good.
And I am all set to see you, but we do have a need for executive sessions.
Why don't you plug EFT Road Race this, this weekend?
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't got it.
Please go try EFT, go to their website, please. Thank you.
I figured you were saying we'll come and everyone's up to talk. Uh, we do have a need for executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation if an opening need may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body as declared by the chair. We will return from executive session only to adjourn our regular session meeting and this action requires a roll call.
Make that motion.
Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
That carries seven zero zero. Thank you and have a good night.